Welcome to KXAN News Today. Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton suing the Biden administration over restricting state law enforcement investigations over abortion information. After abortion rules were overturned nationally, the Department of Health and Human Services issued a ruling that restricts when medical providers could share information with state law enforcement officials. Paxton has been asking the court to abandon this ruling as a HIPAA violation.
Texas Tribune Fest is kicking off today. This is an event focusing on some of the biggest political challenges of our time. It is in downtown Austin and lasts until Saturday.
State leaders looking at how to use your money to cover your needs. The Senate Finance Committee is holding a meeting covering mental health services and inpatient facilities. House of Representatives are going to have a public hearing covering the rising cost of health insurance. We're going to start today with the previously convicted murderer in Austin. With statewide attention, it heads back to a Travis County courtroom. Good morning, everyone. I'm Sally Hernandez.
And I'm Tom Miller. There is a pretrial hearing set for today for Daniel Perry. He is not expected to be there, though. Daniel Perry was previously convicted of murder in the death of a Black Lives Matter protester. He killed Garrett Foster in 2020. It's unclear what today's hearing is going to focus on, however, we do know his attorney requested this pretrial hearing be dismissed.
Okay, background here on this case. Governor Abbott requested the case to be pardoned. The Texas Board of Paroles reviewed the case and then voted unanimously to give Perry a full pardon, restoring his gun rights as well. Perry has been cleared of all the felony charges.
First warning weather with meteorologist Kristin Curry.
Well, good morning. We start with radar not showing anything around us, so dry skies, a little cloud cover, as seen from satellite. But we're not completely done with the rain, so it's a good idea to still keep that rain coat in the back of the car or out work with you, just in case some of those showers later today find you. Our live look from the Indeed domain camera showing a little bit of that fuzz, that cloud cover out there. Seventy-five degrees is where we're starting our day. Everybody pretty much in the seventies right now. Expected to warm into the upper eighties, kind of flirting with that 90-degree mark, but still much cooler than normal. And then we are going to be looking at a growing rain chances up to about 30% to 40% getting into the afternoon and evening. So driest skies look to be this morning. Good time to walk the pup if you can swing it. Spotty storms expected again. We've got cooler nights ahead, though. Our first taste of fall on the way and some tropical mischief that we really need to keep a close eye on for potential impacts next week. More on that in your first warning forecast.
Thank you, Kristin. A Georgia school will remain closed today and tomorrow after a mass shooting. A 14-year-old boy charged in custody in Winder, Georgia, an hour northeast of Atlanta.
Student opened fire at Appalachian High School at the beginning of the school day yesterday, and he is now accused of killing four people. He is facing murder charges and is expected to be tried as an adult. Investigators say the shooter killed two students, two teachers as well. That shooting injuring at least nine others, all are expected to recover. Officers say the suspect used an AR platform-style weapon. They say the suspect surrendered immediately and was taken into custody.
This is everybody's worst nightmare. And I just want to offer my sincere condolences and our thoughts and prayers to the families that have lost loved ones, for those that are injuring and continuing to fight through just a tragic time for really this whole community that's been affected by today's actions.
Law enforcement officers say they investigated this suspect last year. He was accused of making online threats to carry out a school shooting then.
Well, investigators say that school recently implemented a lifesaving tool called Seen T-Jacks. Teachers with a badge would actually alert police by just pressing a button. And when we go in depth here, Marble Falls ISD installed the same crisis alert system at all of its campuses. The district launched the resource this school year. All employees wear badges, allowing them to activate those flashing lights in the audio systems. And when the alarms go off, they are connected with campus administration or even emergency crews. The badges also alert students and staff through different colored lights about an evacuation, a lockdown, a shelter in place, or even to secure themselves inside or clear the halls.
All right, we also want to talk about this. A major cartel arrest in Mexico now has U.S. agents at the border on alert for retaliatory violence. Mexican authorities took the second highest-ranking leader of the Cartel del Noreste into custody, Carlos Trevino, accused of drug trafficking, extortion, kidnapping, and human smuggling. Investigators believe that his cartel has a presence in Laredo here in Texas. An international Border Patrol memo warns agents of a potential uptick in cross-border violence because of that arrest. The memo urges agents to be cautious of combatants attempting to cross the border illegally.
Looking at the total picture here in Mexico, it's definitely unstable. We're kind of used to seeing certain cartels have certain regions and kind of everybody kind of stays in their own lane. That is no longer the case here. They're kind of mixing, matching, and trying to take over other territories that they never had access to.
A few weeks ago, we told you about two major arrests within the Sinola cartel. That happened at a small airport just outside El Paso.
Well, you may see more blimps along the Texas-Mexico border. Our colleagues over at The Border Report are learning the Department of Homeland Security may not be shutting down the surveillance program after all. The program uses tethered aerial blimps for round-the-clock visuals of illegal border activity. On Monday, sources told News Nation the program was shutting down, according to Texas Congressman Henry Cuellar. Negotiations between DHS and the Pentagon have just actually started. And the military has dozens of newer blimps to potentially transfer to keep the program afloat.
The sister of the man accused of killing Harris County deputy constable says her brother feared the government was after him. This according to our NBC station in Houston. Police say the suspect, Atir Muradi, shot Deputy Maher Hussani several times. Happened while he was on his way to work in his personal vehicle. Hussani was a husband and a father of two.
My main goal right now is to support my fallen deputy and his family and to bring calmness, if you will, to the law enforcement community in general and get going on the investigative side.
Investigators say the motive why this happened still unclear.
Barton Springs Pool is still closed. Why? Leaders, though, are having to take extra caution so they can fix the problem.
And a new addition to B Cave, what you might see flying around the city.
Welcome back, everyone. It is unclear this morning when Barton Springs Pool will actually reopen. Austin Parks and Rec sharing a look at the problem that led to the indefinite closure over here.
Yeah, this is pretty weird here. This photo showing large holes that open in an abandoned pipe there in Barton Springs. And this raised some safety concerns because it could potentially suck in swimmers. City leaders now working on a plan to fix it, but they also have to factor in some certain protections.
So all of the work that takes place in this pool has to be sensitive to the Barton Springs salamander and has to be done in a careful way to make sure we don't end up in violation of our federal permit to protect the endangered species here.
That cautious approach is why city leaders are now saying it could take weeks to reopen Barton Springs Pool. We will keep checking in with the city of Austin and get you the timeline on when to expect effects.
A spaceship leaving space without its crew, why the astronauts that left Earth in it are not going to be returning anytime soon.
Texas hitting the road facing the defending national champion Michigan Wolverines. We're hearing from the Longhorns about their big trip.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome back to KXAN News Today. Live look outside from our camera over near the domain. Hope you're having a great day. We're talking to Kristin about your weather in a bit. But up in that sky, you could soon see drones flying over the road. This morning, the BK Police Department will soon be working with autonomous drones.
The department partnering with this Austin-based startup, it's Eve Vehicles Corporation. The goal here is to allow for enhanced first responder capabilities. So here's how it works. When an emergency call comes in, an officer or dispatcher will put in the coordinates for that drone to take off to. No one is flying it. The BK Police Chief says the drones can respond to an emergency automatically and serve as the eyes and ears for first responders who are there on the ground.
The drone will be able to be the first one on the scene and will provide real-time information and feedback to what our officers are en route to.
Startup says that one of those drones should be up and running in the next week with the other two that it's purchased shortly after.
All right, so can police in Texas actually fly drones over your home? That's a question we looked into, and the short answer is, yeah, they can, because law enforcement drones are part of the department's equipment. But police also need to have a reason to fly the drone over your property. The American Civil Liberties Union says more than 1,400 police departments across the country already use drones.
If you're a lover of old film, new or old really, there is a local nonprofit that you might be interested in. For the last eight years, Hyperreal Film has held some screenings at different venues. It's a club. Now organizers say they are ready to open up a permanent clubhouse on Chacon Street in East Austin.
We have this clubhouse that we're building out where people can hang out. So instead of, say, going out to the parking lot to talk about the movie with your friends, you can hang out there, maybe meet some new people.
KXAN Digital reporter Cora Neese spoke with one of the co-founders there about how you can run and participate with this group. You can find that, plus a link to their film screenings, in this story at kxan.com.
That's really cool.
It is cool. I would love to be part of like a cool club.
Yeah, I could see that.
Doing stuff like this.
Yeah, you're totally cool. I would be like, what are we talking about?
It wouldn't be filmed for me.
What would it be?
It would be sports.
Yeah, hockey, right? Yeah.
Hockey or soccer. Maybe I should get involved in like the fan groups with Austin FC.
That would be fun. They have a big fan base.
Yeah, out there. Let me show you what's going on with your forecast. Having some computer trouble this morning. Radar is kind of acting up. So if you're looking at the KXAN Weather App and it's not matching what you see here on the computer, it's probably that issue. But I finally got at least a look at what the latest radar picture is showing me, and that's this itty-bitty shower out in eastern Williamson County. It's nothing significant. Rain chances are going to struggle all morning, but we do have a better chance of seeing some spotty showers and storms later today. Seventy-five degrees, north winds less than 10 miles per hour. We've got humidity at 79%. Today's winds are going to be a little bit more noticeable compared to what we've seen recently. So gusty winds out of the northeast, about 20 to 25 miles per hour, could impact maybe some of your afternoon plans. From the 70s to the upper 80s we go. Rain chances increasing some heading into the afternoon. That's going to be about 40%. So looking ahead, you'll notice our hot resolution model isn't going to show much this morning, but as we get into the afternoon, see, I don't know what's going on with my computer. The data should be there, but it's not. I can promise you, it's showing some spotty showers and storms for the later part of the afternoon, kind of similar to yesterday's coverage, but it's not going to be like what we had earlier in the week with widespread rain and one- to two-inch totals. Not that kind of day. I think if anything, as we do see some of those spotty showers and scattered storms form, we could quickly pick up a few 10, 7-inch, but anything above half an inch is going to be on the ice to let it slide. Lower rain chances tomorrow, and then we get into the weekend where we've got dry skies. Still anticipating drier air making a run at us heading into the weekend. That humidity is going to drop as we transition into the later part of the week. And I know, you know, with the satellite not working with me right now, you're not going to see the clusters of storms and showers, but we do have one in the Caribbean. It's got about a 30% chance for the development as we get into the next six to seven days. It's this disturbance that has eyes on the Bay of Campeche that could potentially bring us some shower storm activity, its potential getting into the later part of next week. So maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday timeframe. There's still quite a bit of action in the Atlantic Basin as a whole, where we are dealing with low probabilities of further organization of three different tropical waves. But right now, I think the one of most concern, and even that's kind of a question mark, is down there in the Caribbean as we speak, with at the earliest impacts coming next Tuesday. So we're looking at a 40% chance of storms and showers for today, again, that's going to favor mainly the afternoon and evening with just a few isolated spots this morning. Tomorrow, 10% to 20%, nothing to really rearrange your Friday over. We'll go dry skies for the weekend, temperatures in those upper 80s to low 90s, and still on track to see some cooler-than-normal weather Saturday night into Sunday morning down to the 60s. Well, two astronauts stuck in space are waiting patiently for a ride back to Earth. Their spacecraft, the Boeing Starliner, will touchdown on Earth tomorrow without its crew. Boeing Starliner spacecraft's trip to space didn't exactly go as planned. The craft leaked helium in its propulsion system, meaning the two had to stay in the International Space Station. Those astronauts are waiting for a SpaceX capsule to pick them up, expected to be sometime next year.
Thank you, Kristin. Part of Austin's old history is being preserved, and this is thanks to $3 million in grants. The Heritage Tourism Division opening applications for its heritage preservation grant next week. These grants are going to be available for capital planning, educational, and marketing projects that celebrate and preserve the diverse history of Austin. Nonprofits, businesses, government agencies, all eligible. Judges will score who needs the money the most using criteria for significance of the site and the applicant's plan for the money.
Each building presents its own challenges, and it is absolutely worth it, but things that are really worth doing sometimes cost a little bit more. And so having different public, like, funding support programs in place really does make this work possible.
Previous grantees include the Paramount Theater, Bethany Cemetery, and local dance hall Broken Spoke.
All right, a potential plan could mean that you don't have to pay property taxes. Some state lawmakers are looking into it. It's just an idea for right now. But senators say the numbers don't add up even with that idea. They met at the state Capitol yesterday, talk about it. Earlier this year, Governor Abbott doubled down on his ambitious goal, which was to zero out the largest chunk of your property tax bill. Now, property taxes in local schools and services, eliminating them, would cost more than $81 billion when it comes to the state of Texas. That's what almost is double the state collects from sales tax. Lawmakers want to spend billions of dollars so they can go ahead and lower the tax rate, but don't expect that bill to go away anytime soon.
Eliminating all property taxes right now would take many billions of dollars, just shy of $100 billion. I don't think anyone wants to see their sales tax rate go to 20%.
Senators expect to pass another property tax relief bill next year to continue the increased homestead exemptions and keep those local rates down.
Going in depth on your property taxes, people who live in Austin are seeing most of their property tax dollars go to Austin ISD at more than 47%. Travis County Central Health and Austin Community College collect a combined total of nearly 28%, and then the city of Austin takes the remaining 25%.
All right, if you had tickets to Float Fest this weekend, I'm so sorry to tell you, but you got to make some new plans. They canceled it. The festival, known for live music while floating down a river, was set to take place at the Circuit of the Americas this weekend. Okay, the festival's had a rocky pass, moving from San Marcos Rivers to Gonzalez, about an hour away from Austin, then going on a one-year hiatus in 2023. Ticketmaster is issuing refunds automatically, but according to Float Fest's website, no statement has been issued as to why that cancellation happened.
Good morning. Many of us have local leaders to vote for this coming November and starting today you can learn more about who they are.
Yeah, six spots on the Austin City Council up for grabs, including the mayor. In total, 23 people are vying for those spots. The city is associating a series of panels with the candidates so that Austin voters like you can learn more information about who you want to vote for in November.
And tonight is the first of these panels. KXAN's Dylan McKim live for us in northwest Austin where that panel is happening tonight. Good morning, Dylan.
Hey, good morning, guys. Tonight we will hear from the seven candidates who are vying for that position to represent District Seven. And it's truly an open seat, the incumbent right now, the woman who is representing, the councilwoman who's representing District Seven, Leslie Poole. She has reached her term limits and she was not able, and she is not able to run for reelection. Now, this is the most crowded pool of candidates out of all the city council races. The forum is a great opportunity for local voters to get more informed on who could represent you at City Hall.
I think it can really feel empowering to get involved in local government and to learn about local government because I think the more you learn, the more you recognize how big of a difference you can make.
Now, tonight, the forum will be held at the Northwest Recreation Center at 2913 Northland Drive. It will start at 6:30. These candidates only apply to the voters who live within District Seven, and we have a really good cheat sheet of all the candidates that are running for office on our website at kxan.com. There you can also find which district you are located in to make sure you can vote in this election. There are six more or five more panels to happen in the next month after this one. The biggest one is happening on October 3rd. That's where we'll hear from the mayoral candidates. Reporting live out here in northwest Austin, Dylan McKim, KXAN News.
All right, Dylan, thank you so much for that. 5:01 is your time. I was at a football game last night. It was a little chilly.
It felt great.
Did I need a sweater?
I don't know what's happening here.
Yeah, and you're definitely going to need one as we move forward because we've got some really cool and pleasant evenings ahead. Let's get you to the forecast right now, live look outside from our west shore home camera there in central Austin. Great view of the skyline, cloudy skies up top. Took a hammer to the computer I've got in the weather center, so the data came back. That's the good news. If you were with me in the last hour, I didn't have much to show you, but maps are finally working and it's showing what I was telling you, 60s and 70s as we start our day together. Temperatures just a little bit warmer than where we were yesterday, but not a noticeable change up by one to two degrees. Bus stop forecast showing temperatures in the upper 80s this afternoon. Yes, we still could see some spotty showers, some scattered rain, isolated thunderstorms possible for the, for the pickup time. So that could potentially impact those kids walking home from the bus stop. Just make sure you're watching radar closely, parents, and, and trying to get out there quickly if we are seeing some showers in the area where you live. I think there's a 40% chance today, down to 10% tomorrow. Big changes on the way for the weekend, which we'll talk more about in your first morning forecast. Until then, let's get you over to Erica with the check on your commute.
And thank you so much, Kristin. Just over the last few minutes, I've been monitoring some of those construction zones that happen overnight. Not seeing any significant delays, but some of those on I-35 through downtown, some in north Austin over at 183 and Mopac, just watching those text cameras right now to see if they are causing any delays for the early morning commuters, but I'm not seeing any. I-35, you look okay. Mopac, 183, all manageable, 290, 71. No complaints if you're coming in from southwest Austin either. The Wyatt Oak Hill seems to be moving along nicely so far on this Thursday morning and happy Thursday, by the way. So at 5:03, these are your drive times, exactly as you would expect to see when we don't have any serious incidents, green across the board. I'll have another check of your traffic in just a little bit.
Okay, so when you're driving, your license plate is likely going to get scanned. It's been a few years in the making, but the city of Austin now has license plate readers and they're up and running.
Yeah, it's the Austin Police Department that's behind this reinstating its flock camera program with updates to its policy. We're going to go over those. There are 40 flock cameras across Austin. Just this last week, interim police chief Robin Henderson told council how the cameras are operating. They have this new policy pilot program actually went live in March, but the updates concern changes requested by city council. The system now can only hold data captured by the cameras for a week. That is down from 30 days. Also, all APD officers must train before getting authorization to access the system.
And they're going to have to go through training every year for that. While new to Austin, these cameras are really not new to central Texas. I mean, Round Rock Police Department have it, Flugerville, Buta, Hays County Sheriff's Office, all of those law enforcement agencies do have the cameras. In the two years since getting the flock, the Hays County Sheriff's Office says it is helping with cases ranging from stolen vehicles to homicide.
A complete stranger on stranger type random incident. We were able to find the suspect vehicle within just a matter of minutes by searching a particular color car that might have been in the area.
The memo says APD will also work with the city auditor to review the program on the information and internal audit process prior to the conclusion of that one-year pilot program.
Looking in depth on this flock, CTE says the data collected is not sold to third-party companies, only shareable among other law enforcement agencies, only kept for 30 days. That is of course different from APD's policy, the department only keeping it for a week as we talked about. Company adds that departments do not use cameras to track speeding or parking violations.
Getting around parts of downtown Austin will soon be a little quicker and a little safer. That is if you're walking, biking, or taking the bus on Trinity Street and San Jacinto Boulevard. This project is focused on protecting cyclists in bike lanes, upgrading pedestrian crossings and making some lanes bus only. The Austin Transportation and Public Works Department is also looking to bolster transit operations and customer access by improving bus speeds, service reliability and safer access.
While transit agencies determine what destinations to serve, what schedules to operate and what fares to charge, local municipalities like the city of Austin control the design of the streets where transit operates.
You can expect to see better mobility conditions before the end of the year, according to the Austin Urban Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Erica. Let's talk a little politics and former President Trump and Vice President Kamala Harris have agreed to the rules for next Tuesday's debate. That debate will follow the same format as the June debate between Trump and President Biden. Candidate microphones will only be live as that candidate is speaking when it's their turn. It's 90 minutes, it will be held without an audience in Philadelphia's National Constitution Center.
Okay, so earlier this summer, former President Trump proposed a debate with Vice President Harris on Fox News. That debate would have aired last night, but Harris's campaign declined to add any additional debates to the calendar. So Trump appeared on Fox last night in a town hall moderated by Sean Hannity. Trump defended himself and his vice presidential pick JD Vance after Democratic vice presidential nominee Tim Walz called them weird.
There's something, there's something weird with that guy. He's a weird guy. JD is not weird. He's a solid rock. I happen to be a very solid rock. We're not weird.
Trump also went after Vice President Harris on fracking, which is a key issue in Pennsylvania, highlighting her comments during the 2019 primary campaign. Well, a top state leader may face a new investigation, a delegation of House Democrats from Texas wanting the Justice Department to investigate the Texas Attorney General, Ken Paxton.
Yeah, what we've learned through this is they want the federal government to see if the state attorney general violated the civil rights of Latino voter groups. Last month, Paxton's office searched homes and seized phones and computers in San Antonio. According to warrants obtained by the Texas Tribune, the investigation is focused on a woman who the state alleges has been collecting ballots for the last 25 years.
It seems to me that we hear in Spanish and English, your vote is your voice, but the only voice that Ken Paxton wants to hear is one that agrees with him.
We also reached out to the attorney general's office for comment on this, but at this point, we have not heard back.
5:08 is the time this morning. Get excited because the Austin City Limits TV show turns 50 and it's celebrating with a very special guest later on today by inducting Garth Brooks into its Hall of Fame. He's going to be in town. He's going to be honored at the 10th anniversary Hall of Fame celebration. This is going to start at noon. The country singer and his band will then perform at ACL Live at the Moody Theater in downtown Austin. It's going to be so fun. His return to the show will launch the series 50th season. Past inductees include his wife, Trishy Yearwood, Willie Nelson, Sheryl Crow, Loretta Lynn, BB King, and many, many more.
I know.
And I love him. What, can we talk about it?
Yeah. Kristin and I are going to go have a sit-down interview with Garth.
I was just going to say whoever gets this assignment is very lucky. Yeah, they don't tell me anything.
Oh, we had to fight. I saw the email come through and I said, hey, is anyone going? And it's like after our work hours, I said, I will take it. I'll find a babysitter. And then their PR, Garth's PR person said, hey, this is actually now a sit-down. You get five to seven minutes with Garth.
I'm honestly, I'm not even jealous, I'm just excited for him.
It's going to be amazing.
That's awesome.
I'm up on Garth Brooks. I know you did too, Kristin.
Yeah, he's my favorite artist of all time.
We're excited to meet him.
Just a little bit.
You're the best day of my life.
Now you're jealous.
The excitement. I often freeze in front of celebrities, but not today.
Yeah, I'm excited. Okay, let's get you to your forecast here because we talked a little bit about this yesterday, so I wanted to show you the numbers because, you know, it's been so nice to enjoy these relatively cooler and wetter conditions, but it was still a hot summer and we've got the data to prove it. Looking at meteorological summer, which starts June 1st and finishes August 31st, we just like to include June, July, August as, you know, the baseline every single year instead of worrying about the, the astronomical start of summer and fall because those numbers do fluctuate. But that was the seventh hottest summer on record in downtown Austin that we just lived through this year. Now, by comparison, you'll notice that last year was the second hottest and the year before was the third hottest. So yes, it was better, but it was still hotter than normal.
Good morning. This is a live look outside here at 5:13 on this Thursday morning, the city skyline as viewed from on top of the KXAN studio. To your news and people who are homeless in Austin have a new way to find some work this morning. It's a cool partnership between Austin Community College and the owner of a local shelter. ACC and the Urban Alchemy are offering a job training certification program. This is for people who stay at either the Austin Resource Center for the homeless or the Eighth Street Shelter downtown. It is a 15 to 20-week program training people in becoming heating and air conditioning technicians.
This is my first time ever having an opportunity to start over in life.
We believe you change your mind, you change your life.
ACC says these positions pay a median salary of about $40,000 per year.
Let's add to this discussion here because $2 million is being funneled into Austin's Homeless Strategy Office to go ahead and get some more people off the streets. This is money that's being divided up. They're going to put into two programs to tackle homelessness from different angles. Now, one program creates a fund to remove barriers that keep people from secure, securing housing and help them maintain stable housing. Another incentivizing property owners is to make units of Another incentivizing property owners is to make units available for the unhoused. The city is making this money accessible through an application process, which people can expect to see the funds starting in December. All right, 5:15 is your time, and there are fast, and then there's mega-fast, right? Which one do you like? A new data center in Round Rock is soon going to house a supercomputer for the University of Texas.
So it's called Horizon. It'll debut in 2026. This supercomputer is from the Texas Advanced Computing Center. These high-tech machines can do complex things like precise weather forecasting and quantum mechanics. Means it needs technology to run quickly and smoothly.
Liquid cooling wasn't a very common thing a couple of years ago. With the advent of these newer chips that Nvidia is rolling out, it's going to become old hat.
The computing center says this supercomputer is going to be 100 times faster than what it currently has.
So let's go in-depth here at 5:16 because UT Austin is home to some of the fastest and largest supercomputers in the entire world. How cool is that? The data center at J.J. Pickle Research Campus in North Austin is as big as a grocery store in a mid-sized town. It served as the crown jewel of UT's Texas Advanced Computing Center. And according to UT, the data center has been already a high-powered computing process for about 23 years. But the data center just scratches the surface of UT's long computing history because supercomputing at UT dates all the way back to the 1960s. It blows my mind about the supercomputer, about what it's going to do and how fast it's going to be.
And we mentioned in it that weather forecasting is part of its job.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I show you every single day. These supercomputers, our supercomputers that we use that go up 10-plus days, do eight quadrillion calculations per second.
Whoa.
Per second, yeah. So it's, I mean, it's so important to do because as a human, we'd obviously never be able to do that. So you're just dumping in a whole bunch of data. They're doing those calculations. They spit out data that I show you in a visual form every morning. So it's nice to have that right in our backyard. Let me show you some of those computers here because we've got a little bit of light rain kind of straddling that Travis-Bastrop County line. This is so light in coverage and intensity, I don't think it's going to do much for us, but we've got better chances for showers and storms later today. Your temperatures are in the 60s and 70s. 76 Austin, 69 Fredericksburg. Pair of 70s up there in San Sappan, Lampasas. Forecast high, 89. For perspective, we hit 90 yesterday, so there's not going to be a big change. We've got a 40% chance of storms and showers, those northeast winds at 5 to 10 miles per hour this morning. I'll bump those up to 10 to 15 miles per hour later today. You're going to notice some gustier winds today, tomorrow, and Saturday, all coming out of the northeast. As far as those storms and showers go, like I said, very isolated this morning. But once we get into the later part of the day, the daytime heating with all that moisture, still a low to the south and west of us, stationary front in the Gulf. We've got some scattered rain anticipated. I in fact bumped up today's rain chance compared to what I was showing you yesterday for today. But then, once we hit sunset, those showers and storms disappear on us. Looking at the humidity, there's still a good amount of moisture to work with today and for the most part tomorrow. But look at the nosedive in our megameter here. This is going to be that push of drier air that comes in. It drops our humidity. It drops our temperatures overnight. We won't see as big of an effect on our afternoon highs as the sunshine is going to kind of make up for that cooler start to the day. But you're noticing overnight, these lows are running 10 degrees cooler than what we typically see for the beginning of September. That would be Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, that we are in those low to mid 60s. I mentioned earlier the fact that we've got some tropical mischief. It's going to be this disturbance in the Caribbean that moves into the Bay of Campeche, so the southwest Gulf of Mexico, that potentially could impact us with some better rain chances next week. Now, we still have a lot going on in the Atlantic Basin as a whole, but it's that one in the Caribbean that has possible impacts to us as we get into Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Now, I'll start conservative because we're seven days out. There's going to be a lot that changes between now and then, but maybe some rain chances on the way again, middle of next week, tropical induced. Seven-day forecast, 40% chance of storms and showers today, dropping that to about 10% to 20% tomorrow. High temperatures still running cooler than normal. We should be at about 93 this time of year. I think we'll be at least a couple of degrees cooler than that for a while. Plenty of sunshine this weekend into next week. You'll, you're noticing those temperatures staying below the average all the way through the middle of next week with those overnight lows in the low to mid 60s. And then again, that rain chance, by the time we hit Wednesday, maybe even earlier, time will tell. Let's get you back over to Erica with the check on your commute this morning.
Thanks so much, Kristin. Hey, 5:20 on this Thursday, a live look at Mopac at 183, that Texas Camera just south of 183 on Mopac at High Ridge. Obviously seeing those big construction cranes there working on that 183 North project. You know, eventually, as a reminder, you'll be able to get onto an express lane. You'll pay for it, but you'll be able to get onto it in downtown Austin and eventually go all the way up to Cedar Park, a quick flyover there at Mopac and 183. So huge changes to that northwest corridor on that 183 North project. Right now, it's very quiet. No overnight construction delays from some of those lane closures that we oftentimes see, but things look quiet. While we have a quiet minute, if you're in that Horseshoe Bay, Lano area, it's dark, obviously. We do still have some reports of some low water crossings being closed. So be mindful if you are especially commuting in the dark, if you come across one of those, just pay attention to those closures. A quick glance at your drive times, they look really good at 5:20 on this Thursday.
Thanks, Erica. More and more Texans impacted by inflation, and with that, some are struggling to put food on the table. The group of people impacted the most by food insecurity here in Texas. Good morning. Live look outside at 5:24. You can see some cloud cover overhead as you wake up on this Thursday morning. Hope you're enjoying your coffee or your tea, getting into the routine of the day and hanging out with us. People in two central Texas cities are going to have a new way of getting around town. The Capital Area Rural Transportation System is expanding carts now to La Grange and Elgin. It is an on-demand bus and van service already in some smaller towns around Austin. The first 90 days are free for new riders. After that, you pay $2 to travel each way. Carts will host ribbon-cutting ceremonies for both cities next week, but you can already book a ride now. More Texans are struggling to buy groceries compared to last year. This is part of some findings of a new poll commissioned by the organization No Kid Hungry Texas. The group says rural Texans and families are being hit the hardest.
We found that more than three-quarters, so about 77% of Texas adults, are having a hard time affording groceries than they were a year ago, citing that the cost of food is actually rising faster than their income.
Here in Austin, 28% showed signs of food insecurity, talking about empty pantries to families having to purchase less nutritionally-dense foods because of those rising costs. And as part of our Set for School series, we've been telling you about central Texas school districts like Lake Travis ISD cracking down on phone use in classrooms. And now we're getting a closer look at digital addiction in kids. Doctors are warning that repeated exposure to digital technology makes it harder to get the same feel-good dopamine response. Kids who grew up or grow up now surrounded by technology can be more susceptible to addiction because of their struggle, their brain. You really can't produce dopamine without that tech as a stimulus.
So they're literally not learning how to be bored, how to be creative, right? So when they get bored, they reach for a high-frequency stimulus. They reach for a phone. They reach for their video game. They do these types of things.
I've been telling my son more and more to reach for a book. To find a healthy balance in a tech-dependent world, doctors suggest a one-to-one ratio of time spent looking at screens to time spent outside, and then turn your screens off after sunset. A pre-trial hearing for Daniel Perry, a convicted murderer underway today. What he was already accused of and how it got pardoned. Plus, new eyes on the border over issues with the federal government, how it is monitoring border crossings.
Welcome. KXAN News Today. Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton is being sued, suing rather, the Biden administration over restricting state law enforcement investigations over abortion information. After abortion rules were overturned nationally, the Department of Health and Human Services issued a rule that restricts when medical providers should share and could share information with state law enforcement officials. Well, Paxton is asking the court to abandon this ruling as a HIPAA violation.
The Texas Tribune Festival is kicking off today. This event focuses on some of the biggest political challenges of our time. It's in downtown Austin and lasts this until this Saturday.
State leaders looking at how to use your money to cover your needs. The Senate Finance Committee is holding a meeting covering mental health services and inpatient facilities. And the House of Representatives are going to have a public hearing over that, covering the rising cost of health insurance. 5:30 is your time this morning, and we are going to start with a previously convicted murderer in Austin, a murderer, with statewide attention. And now that case is heading back to the courtroom.
There's a pre-trial hearing set for today for Daniel Perry. He was convicted last year of shooting and killing a Black Lives Matter protester. We have KXAN's Mercedes Hernandez live at the courthouse. Mercedes, what do we know about what's going to happen today and a little background on this case?
Yeah, there is quite a lot of background to go over. You've got stuff here at the local level, and of course, as you mentioned and alluded to, the state level. Now, in just a few hours, Perry's attorneys will walk through these doors behind me. Now, he's actually not slated to appear in court today. He does not have to do that. But this is still related to the case that he was already pardoned for, but this will be for a lesser charge of deadly conduct. And here's what we know so far. Perry was convicted of killing Garrett Foster in 2023, shooting and killing him during a Black Lives Matter demonstration in downtown Austin back in 2020. He had been sentenced to 25 years in prison just last April. Governor Abbott stepping in and issuing a pardon for him just weeks later in May. Now, cut to this summer, Travis County DA Jose Garza tried to reverse that pardon, asking the Court of Criminal Appeals to reverse what he called an unlawful pardon. His take is that the governor overstepped and improperly interfered in the justice process here. That court overall, though, denying Garza's request. Again, today's pre-trial hearing is related to a lesser charge of deadly conduct. This is also years in the works as well as it was filed in 2021 by the DA's office. Now, we do know that a witness is set to appear at today's hearing, but Perry is not required to appear in court. Now, the latest action on this case happened just a few days ago on August 30th. Perry's lawyers filing a motion to dismiss this indictment, claiming that his rights to a fair and speedy trial have been violated. But of course, we'll stay here at the courthouse and watch what unfolds today, guys.
First warning weather with meteorologist Kristin Curry.
Okay, let's begin with radar. Seeing some very small spots of light rain in our eastern counties. Trying to make a run at the Austin metro. So if you see a few raindrops on your windshield this morning, you're not going crazy. There is some light rain trying to develop, but there's a much better opportunity for rain later today. River City Grill, Highland Furniture Camera there in Marble Falls, nice and quiet. We do have Hut 281 kind of lit up and looking clear. So oftentimes, when we see heavy rain events, we're on the lookout for fog, and I haven't seen any major issues, so that's the good news. Current temperatures in the upper 60s to mid 70s, 76 in Austin, 73 Bastrop, 68 in Mason. If you're going to be walking the pub today, the earlier you can do it, the better, as there's going to be increasing rain chances after this afternoon. Those get up to about 40% today. It's also going to be a little warmer, 89, the forecast high, as just showed you, we're in the 70s for most of us right now. Best-looking rain chance of the week comes today. Dryer skies and cooler temperatures on the way for the weekend, which we'll talk more about, just how low those temperatures go in your first warning forecast. Until then, we'll get you a check on the roads with Erica.
Thanks, Kristin, and good morning. Happy Thursday, 5:34. A live look at I-35 in South Austin. It looks a little bit busy as you head in from the south or from Hays County, northbound that curve there near South Park Meadows. As you can see, traffic is flowing, but definitely hitting the brake lights coming into the downtown Austin area from the south. Now, if you're headed in the opposite direction, so from, you know, central or North Austin, going maybe towards San Marcos or beyond, do watch out for some of that overnight construction. Those delays still in place through that San Marcos corridor, the main area near Highway 80, where crews have been doing a lot of overnight construction. Just give yourself a little bit of extra time if you're headed towards that area to catch a class or go on to San Antonio. But big-picture-wise, things are actually really quiet. We don't have any significant incidents to report right now, causing significant delays for the drive times in the areas that are, that flow into Austin from the northeast, south, or the west. I'll have another check of your traffic in just a little bit.
Thank you, Erica. A Georgia school will remain closed today after what happened yesterday, a mass shooting. A 14-year-old boy charged and custody now in Winder, Georgia. yesterday, a mass shooting. A 14-year-old boy charged in custody now in Winder, Georgia, and that's about an hour northeast of Atlanta.
Investigators say that a student there opened fire at Appalachian High School the beginning of the school day yesterday. He's now accused of killing four people. He is facing murder charges and is expected to be tried as an adult. Investigators say the shooter killed two students and two teachers. That shooting injuring at least nine others. All are expected to recover. Officers say the suspect used an AR platform-style weapon, and they say the suspect surrendered immediately and was taken into custody.
This is everybody's worst nightmare. And I just want to offer my sincere condolences and our thoughts and prayers to the families of that have lost loved ones, for those that are injuring and continuing to fight through just a tragic time for really this whole community that's been affected by today's actions.
Law enforcement officers say that they investigated the suspect last year as well. He was accused then of making online threats to carry out a school shooting. And also this morning, a major cartel arrest in Mexico now has U.S. agents at the border on alert for retaliatory violence. Mexican authorities took the second highest-ranking leader of the Cartel de Noreste into custody. Carlos Trevino is accused of drug trafficking, extortion, kidnapping, kidnapping, and human smuggling. Investigators believe his cartel has a presence in Laredo, Texas. An international border patrol memo warning agents of a potential uptick in cross-border violence because of that arrest. The memo urging agents to be cautious of combatants attempting to cross the border illegally.
Looking at the total picture here in Mexico, it's definitely unstable. We're kind of used to seeing certain cartels have certain regions and kind of everybody kind of stays in their own lane. That is no longer the case here. They're kind of mixing, matching, and trying to take over other territories that they never had access to.
A few weeks ago, we told you about two major arrests within the Sinaloa cartel. Those happened at a small airport just outside of El Paso.
You may see some blimps along the Texas-Mexico border. Our colleagues over at Border Report learned that the Department of Homeland Security may not be shutting down that surveillance program after all. The program uses tethered aerial blimps for round-the-clock visuals of illegal border activity. And on Monday, sources told News Nation that that program was going to shut down, but according to Texas Congressman Henry Cuellar, negotiations between DHS and the Pentagon have actually just started, and the military has dozens of newer blimps to potentially transfer to keep the program afloat.
The sister of the man accused of killing a Harris County deputy constable says her brother feared the government was after him. It's according to our NBC station in Houston. Police say the suspect, Atir Moradi, shot Deputy Mahir Hussani several times. Happened a while. He was on his way to work, driving his own car. Hussani was a husband and a father of two.
My main goal right now is to support my fallen deputy and his family and to bring calmness, if you will, to the law enforcement community in general and get going on the investigative side.
Investigators say the motive in this case is still unclear.
5:39 is your time check this morning. And the Biden administration is investigating Russian interference ahead of the November election, with the Justice Department saying Russian state media secretly funded a media company linked to some popular conservative creators. Now, the department does not allege any kind of wrongdoing by the creators, some of which say they didn't even know the true source of the company's funding. It does say it also seized 32 internet domains the Kremlin used to spread Russian propaganda. Well, as San Antonio dries out, the city's popular zoo is asking for help following Tuesday's flooding. The rain caused the San Antonio River to overflow its banks and back up into the zoo. Floods affected office spaces in the zoo's training room, gift shops, the HIPAA viewing area, restrooms, and pathways. The zoo shut down on Tuesday but reopened yesterday. It still needs your help, though, because the cleanup is expensive. You can donate to their annual fund online or even buy a ticket not too far down the road. No, and not the hippo area.
Looks like there were some ducks or something maybe enjoying that. What's all got going on?
Yeah, unfortunately, all the animals and the staff are okay, but I mean, that could have been a real disaster.
Well, better the hippo area than the lions. They would not be happy. Yeah, exactly. Let me show you what we benefited out of that recent rainfall. Lake levels. Now, obviously, it's going to take a lot more than one rain event to fill up the lakes, but we did pretty well. In fact, we've seen, you know, since the last few months, since April, an 11-foot rise in Lake Travis, but we're still down 20 feet from normal. But we continue to see both Buchanan and Travis rise slowly. It was up about an inch to two inches yesterday with the rainfall. Still 49% full at Travis, Buchanan 66% full. Looking at those high temperatures, upper 80s to low 90s. So you'll notice here's our average. We're staying below that for the next four days. And your nighttime temperatures just look fantastic, 70s as we start Saturday morning, but then we do have this nice cool stretch coming in for the start of the week. The middle of next week could be tropically influenced, which we'll talk more about in your first warning forecast. Okay, Kristen, thank you. Coming up, why law enforcement say they're going to be using something up in the sky to watch you. Hey, good morning, everyone. It is 5:45. A live look outside on this Thursday to kickstart your day. Kristen is here with a look at your forecast. Erica has your traffic. As we start right here on KXAN News Today with your news, you could soon see drones flying over the road very soon. This morning in BK, the police department will soon be working with autonomous drones.
Autonomous. The department partnering with an Austin startup, Eve Vehicles Corporation. And the goal here is to allow for enhanced first responder capabilities. Here's how it'll work. When emergency call comes in, an officer dispatcher puts in the coordinates and the drone takes off automatically. No one's flying it. The BK police chief says that the drones can respond to an emergency and serve as the eyes and ears for first responders on scene as they are arriving.
The drone will be able to be the first one on the scene and will provide real-time information and feedback to what our officers are en route to.
Startup says one of the drones should be up and running within the next week. And then after that, there's two more they're hoping to have shortly after.
So the question that we have, and maybe you have at home, can police in Texas fly drones over your home? The short answer is yeah, they can totally do that because law enforcement drones are part of the department's equipment. However, police need to have a reason to fly the drone over your property. The American Civil Liberties Union says more than 1,400 police departments across the country already use drones.
It is football season once again. The NFL back tonight with the Kansas City Chiefs taking on the Ravens, and you can watch that here on KXAN. Right now, though, the talk of the sports world is Damar Hamlin's return to football with the Buffalo Bills. You'll remember, he went into cardiac arrest during a game in January 2023. He has since been cleared for practice and assured by specialists that the chances of a recurrence are slim.
What, I mean, what else can't this young man do? I mean, he's basically went through what he went through on the field. You guys have written about that over and over. And I mean, to come back from that, you know, it's one thing to come back off of an ACL or a broken bone. It's another thing to come back off of what he came back off of, right?
Hamlin was limited to appearing in just five games in a backup and special teams role last season. In 2022, Hamlin enjoyed his most playing time, starting 13 games. As for that game tonight, Kansas City Chiefs, Erica, are we on Taylor watch for this one?
Always.
Oh, now I'm watching. I forgot. Thank you for giving me a reason to watch.
There you go.
Sorry, fans. I know, I know. Should be a great game, for sure. I love the fact that we're still talking about Damar Hamlin. I think this was one of the best feel-good stories out of last year after such a tragedy. You know, you, very few things bring the nation together, but you saw that number three everywhere after that happened, you know? So that's such a cool, like, victory-like redemption story, you know? It's going to be so fun to watch. Let me show you what's going on with your forecast here, because we've got some light rain out in eastern Travis County. Now, I wouldn't exactly hold your breath on anything significant, but hey, we've got light rain, and we'll take light rain anytime we get it, any day of the year. We still need more. 76 degrees, variable winds, less than 10 miles per hour. Humidity, yes, it's noticeable today, but today's actually going to be one of the stuffiest days. We've got some big improvements on the way as we get into the later part of the week. 70s to start, upper 80s to finish. Rain chances climbing up to about 40% today. Seeing consistency in our, in our data that, hey, we might get a little bit more today compared to what I was showing you yesterday. So good idea to just keep the rain gear on standby. Pollen count, brand-new this morning. Not surprised to see mold on the high side. That's courtesy of the recent rain and humidity. Medium levels of grass, fall elm and ragweed in the low category, but both of those have increased over the last 24 hours. Isolated rain this morning. Getting into the afternoon and evening hours, you can see this spreads out a little bit more. Not severe, not wide-spread, no big flooding concerns here. It's just kind of our last meaningful round of showers and storms before we hit sunset, and those rain chances get much lower for tomorrow. That being said, we've got high school football tonight on KBVO. This kicks off at 7:00 p.m. If you're heading out to Gupton Stadium, watching Bowie take on Vista Ridge. Again, it's a spot shower possible. Most of the game is dry, though. Those temperatures eventually cooling down to the 70s. You'll notice the rain chance at 10 to 20% tomorrow completely gone for the weekend. That's going to be that push of cooler and drier air that moves in. I mean, technically speaking, it gets just dry air, and the dry air is resulting in cooler temperatures in the overnight hours, waking up to 60s Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. But then you'll notice our extended forecast showed a little blip back up with the humidity Tuesday and Wednesday. That's kind of a question mark surrounding what happens with this tropical wave in the Caribbean. Right now, very unorganized storm and shower activity, but you can see it's going to get pushed over the Yucatan Peninsula, into the Bay of Campeche, the southwest Gulf of Mexico. And some models actually kind of curve that around and bring it much closer to the Texas Gulf Coast, to the Louisiana Gulf Coast, meeting up with a front. So that could raise our rain chances as we get into Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week. But obviously, a lot will change over the next week, so we'll have to fine-tune those details once we get closer. And then still, Atlantic waking up, three different tropical waves with low potential right now of becoming something stronger. But a reminder that September is typically very busy for us in the tropics. Seven-day forecast, 40% chance of rain today. High temperatures in the upper 80s, drier skies heading into Friday and Saturday. Fantastic weekend here at home. We've got upper 80s to low 90s to start next week. Those nighttime temperatures down to the 60s. Erica?
Looks very nice. Okay, at 5:50, definitely seeing some traffic down south on I-35. Those of you headed up northbound, just a quick heads up to what's causing this. It's actually on the other side of I-35. So southbound 35 headed towards Hays County, there is a stalled car. It's right near Slaughter, and it's causing some delays in both directions. So I'm going to monitor that for you. But as of right now, anything else on the interstate? Nothing to report. I do have a report that I'm watching at 2222 and 620 of a crash. I'm going to monitor that corridor. I know it's very busy. I'll let you know if it becomes a big traffic issue for those of you driving out west. Near drive time, northbound 35, because of that stall near Slaughter, has entered the yellow, a 32-minute drive from Kyle to downtown. I'll have another traffic update in just a few minutes.
Thank you, Erica. Still ahead, why you need to keep budgeting for your property tax bill.
Good morning. Welcome back, everyone. A potential plan could mean you do not have to pay property taxes, according to some state lawmakers. They're looking into it. It's just an idea, but the senators say it's not adding up. The numbers are not going to do that. They met at the state Capitol yesterday to talk about it. Now, earlier this year, Governor Abbott doubled down on his ambitious goal to zero out the largest chunk of your property tax bill. So property taxes, as you know, kind of funds local schools and services, and eliminating them would cost the state more than $81 billion a year. That's almost double what the state collects from sales taxes. Lawmakers continue to spend billions to lower the tax rates, but don't expect that bill to go away anytime soon.
Eliminating all property taxes right now would take many billions of dollars, just shy of $100 billion. I don't think anyone wants to see their sales tax rate go to 20%.
Senators expect to pass another property tax relief bill next year to continue the increased homestead exemptions and keep local rates down.
Going in depth on this with your property taxes, people who live in Austin are seeing Going in depth on this with your property taxes, people who live in Austin are seeing most of their property tax dollars go to Austin ISD. The school district, more than 47%. Travis County, Central Health, and Austin Community College get a combined total 28%. And the city itself takes in nearly 25%. Part of Austin's old history is being preserved, and this is thanks to a $3 million grant. The Heritage Tourism Division opening up applications for its heritage preservation grant next week. These are a bunch of different grants, all available for capital planning, educational, and marketing projects, and they are there to celebrate and preserve the diverse history of Austin. Nonprofits, businesses, and government agencies, all eligible. Judges are going to score who needs money the most using a criteria for the significance of the site and the applicant's plans for that money. Previous grantees include the Paramount Theater, Bethany Cemetery, and the local dance hall Broken Spoke. Still ahead, where you can meet people who want to represent the city of Austin down at City Hall.
Yeah, and Austin police are watching you, their eyes on your license plate, the limits, though, that they have when it comes to your information and how they're using that information to solve crimes.
Kristin Curry is here. She's looking at just how low temperatures are going to drop as we head into the weekend. Taking a live look right now from Marble Falls, more water running through there after we got all that rain headed toward Lake Travis. We also have your full forecast when we return. Good morning. Almost all of us have some local leaders to vote for this coming November, and starting today, you can learn more about them.
Six spots when it comes to the Austin City Council up for grabs, including the mayor of Austin. So in total, 23 people are vying for those spots, and the city is associating a series of panels with the candidates so that you can get to know them ahead of the November vote. So we have Dylan.
Yeah, KXAN's Dylan McKim, live for us in northwest Austin. That panel is happening there tonight. Good morning, Dylan.
Hey, good morning, guys. Yeah, it's the first forum for these candidates, and tonight, we'll hear from the seven candidates who are vying for that open seat in the 7th District, and it truly is an open seat. The incumbent right now, Leslie Poole, she has reached her term limits, and she cannot run for reelection. Now, this pool is the most crowded pool of candidates out of any city council race, and the panel really is a great opportunity for local voters to get more informed on who could represent you at City Hall.
I think it can really feel empowering to get involved in local government and to learn about local government, because I think the more you learn, the more you recognize how big of a difference you can make.
Tonight, the forum will be held at the Northwest Recreation Center at 2913 Northland Drive. That's going to start at 6:30. These candidates only apply to voters who live in District 7. Now, we have a really good cheat sheet of all of the candidates on our website at kxan.com. There, you can also find which district you are located in. Now, this is the first of six forums to happen in the next month. And of course, the biggest forum that we're all going to be looking forward to is the mayoral forum. That's going to happen at City Hall on October 3rd. Reporting live in northwest Austin, Dylan McKim, KXAN News.